Okay, folks, I want to open up the Hopkinton Town Council meeting of March 4th, 2013 with a moment of silent meditation and salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First on the agenda is an ordinance amendment. I want to open up the hearing on ordinance amendment to Code of Ordinances, Chapter 19, Taxation, Article 1, Sections 19-2, when interest is waived. The proposed amendment would clear up any existing language without any substantive change and would add a section permitting interest to be waived on one quarter of a taxpayer's overdue payment under stated conditions. It's introduced and sponsored by me, Council President Frank Lindolfi. I just want to preface our hearing tonight, I guess, by just saying how I came about this ordinance amendment. I just, sometimes I think of just small things that we can actually help the residents and the taxpayers that wouldn't affect the town financially, and this was really one of them. It's a very small thing to do. If somebody misses one quarter of a tax payment in the last five years, we'd be able to, we'd have a place to have that be waived. And it's essentially not a lot of money. On average, for my particular tax bill, it's about $9. So it was something that I actually had a neighbor of mine miss a payment and complained to me about it, and I started thinking, I said, geez, you know, banks offer, you know, if you've never been late, you know, a waiver of an interest charge or credit cards offer that as well. So I just thought maybe it was a nice thing to do for the taxpayers and it wouldn't cost the town a lot of money. So that's really what drove me to try and look into this. And Bill McGary and Rita were nice enough to dig into the state ordinance and find out how we could, you know, make this happen. We just basically came forward with that information and that was that. So Rita Dean is here, certainly from the tax collector's office, to answer any questions as well. So I guess council discussion, Scott, do you?
Yes, I congratulate the council president for this. I know a couple of years ago, somebody had a problem and was, I guess, late or something to that effect. And it shows that, I assume we're all going to vote for it. I think that it shows that the council knows we work with the guy on the street and the general public. So I think it's a very positive step. And it's going to buy a lot of goodwill for the council and, I think, town government. And working with people is very important. And if they work with the town, we work with them, I think that it's a positive. And we're also recognizing people who have a good record of paying taxes. So it's a big plus, and I do, once again, congratulate our council president for taking initiative on this issue.
Thanks, Scott. Sarah?
Two comments. The solicitor made a recommendation on a little bit of a language change. Rita, did you see that change? Okay, good.
That draft ordinance is also attached to the agenda, so in order to have somebody explain what that change is.
Mm-hmm. Oh, okay. The change was, it read where, under B, where it says, "Interest on one quarter's overdue tax payment." The change is in number one. It currently reads pursuant to Rhode Island General Laws, Section 44, 5.8-1, the tax collector is authorized and directed to waive interest on one quarter's overdue property tax. There was a little, she wanted to tighten it up more, and the new reading is they're going to delete, recommended that we delete interest on one quarters, and instead it would read, "And directed to waive one quarter's worth of interest on one overdue property tax payment and allow the remaining balance of taxes owed to be paid," et cetera. So that was the change, just to tighten it up. I had a question on number, on Section 2 or Number 2. And I think this would go over to the solicitor. The question was around, let's see, the second, third sentence down. If the taxpayer receives an adverse decision from the tax collector, the taxpayer must pay the interest, and after paying said interest, may then file a claim for reimbursement with the town council?
Yes.
I was going to ask you, should it say that they're appealing the decision? Should it be, should it say something like that? That they're, because that's what they're doing? Or does that?
It's, I guess it's up to you. I don't think it makes any difference at all in that context, I mean, whether it's the filing or...
Well, they're filing a claim. I, I just wanted to make it clear to the taxpayer that just because they file a claim doesn't mean they're going to get the money. It means that you're appealing the decision that's been made, and that's, that's all I was thinking of. I was looking at it from that point of view.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, if it doesn't have any, if anybody else feels that way about it, I just wanted to see us tighten it up.
You know what we could do? We could, we could say, "May then file an appeal..."
There you go.
"...by filing a claim for reimbursement."
Oh, okay. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, it sounds good.
Okay.
Can we do it simpler by just, "May then appeal a claim for reimbursement with the town council?" Just take "file" and make it "appeal"?
May then appeal, no, because they're not appealing a claim for reimbursement. They're appealing the decision of the tax collector.
Well, the appeal is the claim for reimbursement.
Right.
What did...
My point is, they're not appealing that claim.
Right.
So that you wouldn't want to, you wouldn't want to just substitute the word "appeal" there, it doesn't work.
Could you say that again, what you, so I could write it down?
"May then appeal that decision..."
Appeal that decision, okay.
"...by filing a claim."
That's all I have. I think, I think it's, I think it's great.
Thank you. Sylvia, Barbara?
I have no, nothing to say about it, I think it's fine.
Thank you.
I agree, fine idea.
Okay. The only question I had, again, was what, exactly what Sylvia had about the taxpayer receiving that, but it looks like that's been solved, so, okay, councils...
I'll make a motion that this be adopted.
No.
We can't.
No, no, no.
No.
Just a motion, make a motion to close the hearing and set date to consider adoption of the ordinance.
Public.
We're too anxious.
We're, we're not done yet.
We got to get public done. Anyone out in the audience wishing to speak on this matter? None? Hearing none, okay.
A move that we close the hearing?
A move that we close the hearing?
Yeah, a move that we close the hearing and set the date to consider adoption of the ordinance.
Okay, Lisa, when could we do this?
Is yours the second? I made the motion to file, to close the hearing, and then you said the same thing.
I had it down as Consular Thompson, and then I had Consular Pauw as the second.
Okay, that's good, okay.
Your next regularly scheduled council meeting is the 18th of March, and if you believe all the changes and the cooperation that may be made into it, we will consider adoption or consideration of that.
Yes, that's fine, okay.
Day after St. Patrick's Day, too.
Thanks for coming, Rita. I thought we'd be asking you lots of questions, but it worked out good. Yes, very good. Thank you.
Yep. So, the motion seconded, Scott?
Do we have to poll voters?
We have a motion and a second. Yes, you need to vote.
Poll vote?
We're just...
All those in favor?
Yeah, yes.
You calling for the vote now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda, folks, is the consent agenda. I just want to preface, you know, if we have any, certainly any substantive changes, certainly we'll poll those, but any, any corrections that are minor in detail, I should say, get to Lisa, I guess, prior to our meeting, so we don't have to get bogged down with, you know, corrections to grammar. But I have a motion to...
Motion to approve town council meeting minutes of February 19th, 2013, February 11th, 2013 budget workshop notes, and approve the refund submitted by the tax collector.
Assume.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Was anything maybe to be polled? Yes, or... First, public forum, anyone out there wishing to speak? Okay. Next on the agenda is the town manager's report, Bill McGary.
Thank you. February 19th, Laura Kenyon, Tim Teft, Ron McDonald, and I met with FEMA and Rhode Island EMA officials at the Hopkinen Police Department to discuss reimbursement procedures related to the historic blizzard of 2013. Government officials were visiting the various cities and towns that were adversely impacted by the blizzard in an effort to obtain preliminary estimates of damage and storm-related expenses. We estimated our expenses to be in the area of $75,000, of which 75% would be reimbursable if federal officials declare a state, state of emergency, as we did with the state and also with the town. So we'll just have to wait to hear from them as to whether or not that happens. The 22nd, I attended the monthly meeting of the Rhode Island City and Town Managers Association, and this month, attended two council meetings and four council budget workshops. February 25th, Council President Frank Lindolfi and I met with Peter Lackert, Michael Rook, and National Grid Representative Paul Stasiak at the Crandall House regarding the status of National Grid's proposed substation on Ashaway Road. They've signed a purchase and sales agreement on a 17-acre property and plan to close in the fall, and engineering and permitting work is anticipated to be completed by the end of the year. Construction is scheduled to begin during 2014, with the site being finally energized and operational hopefully during the summer of 2015. And this meeting was the result pursuant to the councils requiring them to meet with myself and the town council president on a periodic basis. Lastly, February 27th, I attended the bid opening for the town's full revaluation of property. Town Clerk Lisa Cook-Martin opened the bids in town hall council chambers, and they're currently being reviewed by the staff, and a recommendation will be made to the council at a later date. That's all I've got.
Any questions for Bill, folks?
One question, Bill. Bill, why would, why would they need 17 acres? Did they explain why they purchased a 17-acre piece of property down on 216?
That was the desirable location. I'm not sure, I'm not sure whether the size of the property was as important as the location of the property.
Yeah, yeah.
From my memory, it was, as Bill said, and, and it just happened to be that the property had 17 acres.
Okay.
They were looking for land all over and trying to find out where would it work.
There would be indication of them expanding onto the 17 acres and doing some...
Well, they wanted to be away from the neighbors.
Right.
And that allowed them to do that.
That's good.
And they're going to keep that cornfield.
That's good, too.
You know, it's going to stay there. Or, not necessarily corn, but it's been corn lately.
Yeah, okay.
They wouldn't be able to expand on it without coming back to our council.
Just one quick side note on that. When we met with those folks at Crandall House, I found it interesting, there was, I wanted just the council, just to get a brief heads up on it, there was some, near the site planned, there were some ceremonial rocks, I guess, that were close to the pad where it actually be constructed from the marigants and Indians.
Ooh.
So, they're going to have those surveyed, the Indians will have those surveyed to determine, I guess, if that pad site that we've initially identified will be okay where it's going to be.
Sure.
Hopefully it will be, but that's going to be to be continued, so. Very interesting stuff, I mean, it just, I guess these rocks apparently have to be pointed in the southwest direction. But anyway, so, very neat stuff, but anyway, so the surveys will be done, and they'll let us know, I guess, if that site has to be moved slightly to accommodate that, so.
We have 17 acres, they should find another spot.
Yeah. Yeah, let's hope, let's hope, so. But, yeah, that was it. Thanks, Bill.
Good stuff, Bill.
Thank you. Next on the agenda on the new business is to discuss and consider adoption of the Hopkinen Emergency Operations Plan 2013. Ron McDonald, our emergency management person, director, is here to field some questions. I just wanted to say, Ron, this manual is quite, quite a thing. It encompasses, anytime I tried to stump you to find if there was anything not in there, I couldn't find it. The only thing, I, I guess, and maybe you can expand on this just for a minute, for me, I know it was touched upon, at least was a lot of functionality with the town council president, but the only thing I didn't see was the, I guess, the command, like, if something happened to me, I didn't see like a continuity of government type of thing in there, but I don't know if that's in there.
I don't see the good vice president.
Well, first let me introduce, this is Dory Boardman, she's our regional planner that covers the southern end of the state from Rhode Island Emergency Management. Basically, what this document is, is it's pretty much a template that all the towns follow, and you just plug in your information into it, so it'll be similar to this, every town, city, and then also to the state. Maybe Dory can touch on it, but I'm assuming, the state law pretty much says the chief executive official of the town is the one that's in charge, so I'm assuming if there's a succession plan, either in the town ordinance or however, you know, if something would happen to you, the vice president would, I would assume, move up into that and take over the duties, so I'm assuming that's probably how it's covered.
There is a separate plan called a continuation of the document that was taken out of this document because of political reasons in other communities, so it is a separate, final document that we can work on. But as far as what you're talking about, a continuation, we would want to put down a replacement and revenge on vacation.
We haven't got to that plan yet.
Well, that's in our charter, I mean, that's, so that's covered. It doesn't have to be covered here. Whenever anything happens to this fellow here, he goes to Hawaii, then in his absence, the vice president handles it.
Yeah, I just couldn't find it in there.
In a nutshell, basically, this document just outlines, doesn't take away the routine day-to-day policies and procedures of, you know, the police, fire, ambulance, public works. It's basically for a large-scale disaster, and it just outlines, if we opened up the Emergency Operations Center, who'd be responsible for what, and the emergency support functions, you know, 1 through 15, which in the state EOC, they have those functions as well, and our ESF would talk to that ESF up at the state. So it's basically just to get everyone on the same page between local, state, and federal, and just outline everyone's pretty much responsibility should something huge happen, and we have to get everyone in the room together and communicate, so.
I just read, I didn't read the whole thing, I just read the beginning of it, and I had brought up to both, both them that about the fact the vice president wasn't listed, so you don't think it's important that we put...
It's in the charter, it's in the charter, she's right.
So you don't think, there's one other thing that I really think that compuses a lot of people, and it's on page H, and it talks about the county.
H?
Page H?
H.
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 Basically, on page H, 3.3.2, county. Unlike most states, Rhode Island does not have county government, and if it ever did, it was strictly in colonial times. And I just don't like the phrase, and maybe I'm being picky, it says, "The town of Hopkin is located in Washington County," which it is. While county government is of little consequence, but there is no county government. It should say something like, since county government does not exist, that there is no, like, county commissioners, like most states have. Rhode Island counties are really irrelevant in a government sense, other than they have courts, but their state institutions, like Washington County, court system is part of the state of Rhode Island government. There's no county government, county commissioners, the way that regular counties are set up, so I, I think we should at least recognize, although funds might be apportioned or decision might be apportioned on counties, I just think to, to suggest that of little consequence, it has no consequence because they don't exist, there is no county government, so I think we should say something about, while county government does not exist in Rhode Island.
Ron, I mean, just to Scott's point, can we make any, any changes to this document?
Yeah, I'd assume we can make whatever changes we want.
Making your documents possible.
What are your thoughts on that?
No, that's a good point. I think it's a good point. Yep, so that's one that needs to get fixed.
Because, oh, yeah, because, you know, like, we're not like most other places in America.
I can edit that, but there is an important part, the next part of it, what we went through with the storm and the blizzard, they do base the thresholds on the amount of money for each county to award, you know, the declaration to the state for FEMA reimbursement, so that part, I would assume, should probably stay.
Yeah, it's just the fact that we shouldn't suggest there's county government in Rhode Island because it doesn't exist.
I will, I'll make that change in the final.
You have a set, Scott?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, an appendix, what was it? Attachment 3, almost to the, to the back, to the end. Attachment 3, it's just contact information? And I thought that, first of all, I noticed, Barbara, you don't, that's not your email anymore. Your email has changed. So you'd want to get that corrected. It's got the light resources, so you need to get that corrected. Scott, I don't know if that's okay with you, the way it is. It's Scott Billhurst at Yahoo. Is that the one you use?
That's not the one it works.
Oh, yeah, the, I'm trying to use Hotmail, but I've had problems with it.
Well, we just need to know what to put there, so.
I just copied this from when we did it, from the town, what was on the town website.
This is an opportunity to make these little changes, so.
Hotmail.com.
L-R-D still works, but I want to go on.
Hit it again, please.
Hotmail.com.
And did you get Barbara's? Oh, you've got Barbara's, right, Bill?
That may be changed again, but that's why I tried to...
Light 4751.
4751.
Light 4751@gmail.com. Although, the one that you have still goes through.
I just have two more questions.
And of all of that, that's all I had, so, well done.
Barbara?
I actually have a number of things.
Okay, so, wait, I'll go back to Scott. Okay, Scott, go ahead.
I just got, and I might be, page 10, 4.2.1, have we formally changed the appointment power for the emergency manager from the council manager?
Yes.
So that's been definitely changed?
Yeah.
Okay. Because I know the manager did hire him, but I didn't know if we formally changed it.
It may not be formally changed on the charter, because we haven't redone the charter yet.
Yes, so technically...
But I think we've done it as a policy.
You did it as a ordinance.
Right.
Okay, okay.
So there's no... That's in here somewhere in the back.
That's no conflict with that.
So that's okay, that's, that one's all right.
And the other thing I do have a question about, and I'm not necessarily against it, but page 15, 5.1.7, use the local firms, and I just think, I'm going to read it. When major disaster assistance activities are carried out by contract or agreement with private organizations, firms, or individuals, preference will be given to extent feasible and practical to those organization, firms, and individuals residing or doing business primarily in the affected area. My question to that is, obviously, most people want to give business to local people, but to what extent should bidding be in, like, if you had to get gravel or stuff like that, except if it's an emergency, you just don't worry about that type of stuff?
Well, it depends. Generally speaking, you'd have to follow the town's purchasing policy. So anything over a certain amount of money, like $500, or you have some discretion under $500, but after that, you have to, you have to get written estimates, and then it gradually increases from there. But there are two provisions in the purchasing policy. One is a, an emergency policy where you don't have to follow the guidelines of the purchasing policy, and the other is, is, one is just a sole bidding, a sole bidder. What was that again?
Sole source.
Yes, a sole source, those are the two exceptions, emergencies and sole source, where you don't have to, those are exceptions to the purchasing policy.
Thanks, Bill. Phil Sesska?
Yeah.
Okay. Barbara?
All right. I have a, I have a couple, they're mostly general, they're not as specific as that. One of the, you have the four comprehensive phases of emergency management. The first one is mitigation, those activities which may eliminate or reduce the probability of disaster, but on, and these are right at the very front, the very first, they aren't, they aren't page numbered. But under the Declaration of Local Disaster Emergency, 301513B, the effect of a declaration of a local disaster emergency, which I understand, that makes sense, you're going to have a local disaster, you declare it, but is to activate the mitigation response and recovery. How can you activate the mitigation when that's supposed to eliminate or reduce the probability and you know you're going to have a disaster?
I think that was copied right from the state.
Yeah, no, I think this is boilerplate, because it seems like the effect of a declaration allows for the recovery aspects of any and all applicable local disaster, but if you're activating, you're activating the mitigation response, seems like it's the cart, you know, the horse has left the barn, and, you know...
Yeah, I agree with the wording, yeah.
You're closing the door after it. I'm just not sure, and that's sort of a, maybe a general question for the state, it's just, it doesn't make any sense to mitigate after you've already declared it.
Right, it clearly is prepare, this, respond, recovery, and then mitigation.
Yeah, exactly.
So that seems...
So they are just...
It's on the declaration form, right?
It's on the declaration, and it seems like a declaration, by the time he declares an emergency, we're already having the problems, we're not mitigating or reducing or eliminating the probability of it. We're already there. It just doesn't make sense. It might make sense to prepare, respond, and recovery, but the mitigation, I think, is like when you do all the vaccines, when you're preparing people, which is...
Yeah, unless, like I said, I think that was pulled from the state law and just paste it on here, unless they're assuming that, if it's a declaration before the disaster, maybe, I can't...
Yeah, you're sort of, yeah, I guess, but it's sort of...
You could also mitigate against further losses.
That's right, yeah, exactly.
Once you're in a disaster.
You could mitigate...
I suspect what that's talking about is mitigation against further problems and losses.
Maybe "further" would be a nice word to add in there.
I can check that statute number, I don't know if you can really, we can change it. I think it's just copied from the state.
No, no, I know this is boilerplate, I know you haven't done it, it's just that sometimes when you start looking at boilerplate, you realize, it really doesn't say what it's supposed to say, and it has to be pointed out at some point. I, I think I got this one, the military support to...
Page Barbara?
Basic plan, page 9, military support, this is actually for the chief. Military support to civil authorities is accomplished, you know, as you say, but is my understanding that it is under the police, our local police? Does the military support, as it's accomplished, will remain at all times under military command, but will support and assist the Hopkinen forces? I'm assuming that means the police forces?
Well, what the military also has is the National Guard resources, they also have things beyond, the chief can probably speak to the police portion, but they can also provide four-wheel-drive vehicles, construction equipment, specialists in engineering and stuff like that, and that's usually...
Who are they under there? Are they under you? Are they under the police chief when they're military? Or are they under you specifically?
I would assume they're going to be working under the incident command system and probably fall under the head of the town, but if they're working for, like, a military police support, I'm assuming they're going to be working in conjunction with the police, I don't think, maybe Dory can speak to this, I don't think military personnel can be commanded by civilian forces.
Correct. Right, I would, I would think so, that's what I'm trying to...
I think it's more of a unified...
Right, it's just so, who are they, who are they under?
Well, I'm going to contact the State of Emergency Operations Center, and if they would be deployed from the State of Emergency Operations Center. And then, once they're here, working with the state policeman who works with the state police.
They assist the town, but they, they fall under military command, of course.
Like, if we needed...
No, no, I understand that, I'm not, I'm not saying that, it's, it's called, but once they're in my town, who is responsible for what they do? I mean, the military, I'm a military brat, so I do know it goes that direction, but it seems like they would work in conjunction with, with you as head of EMA.
Yeah, they would work under the, they would work under the Emergency Operations Center, like, if we, if, you know, we requested, you know, three four-wheel-drive vehicles to help rescue people out of some area of town that's flooded, they'd be working with the police, fire, under unified command. They'd, they'd listen to what we ask, but, you know, their command and control would be...
Right, is there a Rhode Island EMA state person there with you? Because they're called in under Rhode Island EMA.
Well, what we do is, we send requests up via communications, either a computer, through web EOC, you can request assets, or you can call, or use the radio, and usually, whatever function you're in, like, if search and rescue, they would contact the search and rescue ESF function at the state, and then they would, up there, ask for the resources and send them down. them down. It's basically just a request.
And you would be overseeing some of this as part?
Well, yeah, we'd, something that big would have the emergency operations center open, and those requests would come through me to the state, and then when they come back, they would be deployed locally, depending on what the resource is.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were sort of in the loop as well. I know we can't direct the military, but I wanted to make sure.
Well, when they come down, they, they work with us. I know they worked with, in the blizzard with Charlestown, helping, you know, rescue, and when they had the floods in Westerly, they, they basically worked with the police and the fire department and the rescue.
They worked with us with the floods also.
That's great. But so, and so you were there too then, Bill?
Yes.
Good. I just wanted to make sure that we have people there that they're working with, if not, not under, but at least in conjunction with. Then I had some questions. I was inter, I really found interesting, the Annex A, all-weather natural hazards.
Page?
It's page four I'm on, but it's actually Annex A, all-weather. One of the things I found really interesting about this is that you have the overall risk of experiencing the direct effects of tornadoes, snowstorms, floods. And the reason that this is, this was interesting to me is because of insurance that we all carry. We carry our home insurance, but I've found that when we're looking for home insurance now, they're asking, how close are you to the ocean? And I keep saying, I'm outside of your range. I am outside, I am just outside, but I am outside, because once you get in the range, your insurance goes double and triple, it just goes warming up. And so I think this actually will assist if someone's looking at their insurance policies, because it says where we're, overall risk of experiencing direct effects of a hurricane, which is page four, is moderate, but you also get more specific on where we are, you know, where you would get to, high, moderate, or low, or none. But it is something that I'm very concerned that we don't blow out of proportion, because the cost to the citizens can be astronomical. And I would like EMA to be able to support us, that we're not on coastal flooding, and we're not going to be having storm surge of eighteen feet.
The only thing we really have to be concerned about are some of the dam, dam problems.
Right, that was my next.
But the hurricane, yeah.
Yeah, the dams were in there too. How are you taking those, that whole list of dams? And are you just, are you checking it with the state?
We have a, we have a list of dams now, and the former EMA director has DM emergency plans. I'm trying to tackle one thing at a time, but in those plans, it basically lists per dam, like the evacuation areas, what condition they're in, and I think there's some discussion right now, I think it's under REMA right now, dams, right? But they're trying to get it into the DEM, because they have.
Oh, yeah.
They have all the experts, and REMA doesn't. So I think there's some sort of a discussion about that.
A quid pro quo here, guys, you're going to have to take it. I think that would be great, but I was glad to see you listed them, and I'm really hoping that you'll just take a look at them for the people around each of those dams, those dams. I think that was it. Oh, then I have one other question, and again, this one is more general, is how are you doing, I know you've been doing this plan, how are our elderly and our disabled helping you to make sure you have the plan corrected? How are you doing on reaching out to all of our disabled?
Well, that's kind of a different thing. This plan is basically for the inner functions of the town. Each elderly home, for example, has their own emergency plans, like the schools have their own emergency plans, but we do have resources to contact them through the state emergency special needs registry, and obviously with the code RED system, but that's more operationally, this is kind of more our responsibilities as what we're supposed to do.
And so the three point two point three, special needs population, so you're finding that you're filling that, you're getting every, all the information you need from our town? Because it's pretty extensive.
Yeah, I already, when I first got in, I already made contact with, well, we're pretty much through the meds plan and the special needs registry. Those two, those people work in the same area, so I'm pretty much in contact with them a lot. I also reached out to, they changed their name now, it's the Rhode Island Department of Behavioral Healthcare.
I know, I saw that.
And that, that long thing. When I first got in, I made contact with the person that was responsible for them, and I have a list of all the group homes. They're confidential, so they can't be in the plan, they pretty much almost didn't want to give me the information. So we, I have a list of where they are, how many beds are in there, and the contact information, and they're all in that special needs registry, I made sure they were all in there, and if not, we actually found a couple of people that weren't. And one, they had in Richmond, which was in Hopkinton, and vice versa, so that was already corrected.
Yeah, I'm glad you're correcting that, because that's a problem with the HIPAA rules, and nobody can know anything, but then they scream when you.
It took me probably three weeks to, through probably an attorney for that place, and an attorney for another place, and a supervisor, but I ended up getting the information.
I like that.
Thank you. That was, that was actually, I just wanted to make sure you were being able to be successful, because all these very big emergency plans are new to all the states, but I think that they are going to run into problems where you suddenly run up against a brick wall where no one wants to tell you anything. And then disaster, you don't have time to figure it out.
That's why I have a special binder that has all that important information in it, so if I need to, it's in there. But I did get that, that was one of the first things I actually did.
Thank you very much. Yes, I am.
David?
I did read the whole thing, and my eyes split over at the end, but I did get through it. Ron, just a couple of questions. One, on page, Basic Plan, page three, you have flooding and dam failure. Maybe you just spin those off, because sometimes we don't have a dam failure, but we do have flooding.
Split them up, sure.
Yeah, split them up, I just, just one suggestion.
Okay.
The other thing too, I've, I've been in this town for, since the mid-seventies, I've always called it Hope Valley Dam, what's, what's its true name? Off McKinnon Street?
I'm not sure off the top of my head. There's, I was actually amazed at the number of dams that were in the town.
I know, yeah.
I can get that for you, I don't have the answer right now.
It's going to be one of these listed here that are on appendix.
And there might be even.
Annex eight.
More than that in there. I have a more complete list.
That's a pretty major dam.
And I think the hazard mitigation plan might have.
Well, those are listed dams, if you want to see them, they're on page six of Annex A.
Yes, thank you.
And of course, there is a dam there that already failed, it's listed. We'll get to that.
They have two there, I have a document somewhere where they're ranked. I think it's in the dam plans that say, you know, they're.
Significant.
Yeah. Whatever language they use. The conditions, I guess you'd say, the conditions that they're in.
Isn't that fine?
Scott, you have one more?
Yeah, I have one question. One of the problems that government seems to have, and Reddy has had this problem, do, do these agencies realize that some of these villages, like Wyoming, it's not necessarily Richmond, it can be Hopkinton also? Because even, I know Council Husband had a problem one time with the registry, thinking that, we're trying to register as current Richmond, even though he has a Wyoming address that lives in Hopkinton.
Yep.
And Bradford, people would assume that you're from Westerly. So do, do these government agencies, is there a problem then, for them realizing that, that some of these villages go over two municipal, over various municipal lines? Is there a problem with them understanding that?
Well, I've had personal incidents where, with the special needs registry and the code RED system, because when they imported the data from one call, I've had people that are in Bradford and Westerly, I had to take out, and I, a few people from Richmond somehow got in there, whether some people added them in, or they got imported in the other system, or because it was a shared zip code, but when they, when they call me, we straighten it out, but.
How common is it?
I probably run into it maybe ten times. Just pretty much call and have them fix it type of thing, but.
It's quite the plan. Really done an amazing job.
It took a long time, so, but I wanted to make sure. Hopefully, you know, no matter how many times you read a document like this, something slips by, so as, you know, every year when we look at it, we're going to update it and make sure it stays current, because I think the last one that's official is from like nineteen ninety-six-ish.
Well, I like to thank you for all the work you've done, not only on this, but all the other work you've been doing since you've been Emergency Management Director, and I think you're leaving a good deal for the job you're doing.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Chipping away a little bit at a time, but this is the big thing that we wanted to make sure we got done, and then we'll work, start working on the other plans one at a time, so.
Yeah, that list of dams, the Asheville Pond Dam, it's on page six of the Annex A, and Asheville Pond Dam didn't already fail, so there, I don't know how to deal with it, but it doesn't exist. It failed in a, in one of the storms. Was that Irene? That was the one. Oh, is that the, oh, I'm getting them mixed up.
I think it was Blue Pond was the one that was.
No, that's, thank you, I'm incorrect. Ignore me. It's not, Blue Pond's not on there, that's what I was thinking there. I got it mixed up with Asheville. Yep.
Scott, one second. I just had one quick question on the Basic Plan, page five, last paragraph, it references mutual aid. I guess, do separate agreements, Ron, have to be signed like we did with the police department, or is this something that's implied, or?
Well, usually, what we have, we don't really have any mutual aid agreements. I know like the fire departments and the ambulances do, because they're private, so we don't really have any control over there, over there. Plans, I guess you'd say. But, you know, if we had a mutual aid, you know, we could have a mutual aid agreement for certain other things, like, you know, public works or something like that. I don't know how they work within their organization. I don't know if Dory knows. No.
There is no official mutual aid between public works, like, as they have tried to ask, working in the fire and police. There hasn't been a lot of cooperation.
Yeah, we just re-signed one with Richmond Police, with our police department, so that's why I was just asking, I'm wondering if it's something that needs to be addressed, or?
You know, I know when times of disasters or emergency, everyone helps each, each out anyway, but I think a lot of the problem is when they try to come up with these agreements, it's liability, insurance, and all that type of thing, so sometimes I guess it's better just to do it when you do it, and hope, you know, hope for the best.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate your work on this, is that, any help?
It's like, just moving out of water, I'm old. How often are inspections of dams in town to make sure they're, they're, that it's not going to be a problem?
Dory can probably answer that question.
The department's DEM handles the inspections, and it's based on category, there are three types of dam categories, it's high hazard, which if they fail, will incur a loss of life. Significant hazard is loss of property and economic loss. And then there's a low hazard dam. So based on those categories, they have a schedule, what they set up to inspect things throughout the state. So I believe high hazard would have like a more aggressive two-year inspection, unless there's a problem, a specific problem, when they get thrown out by the fire inspections, and then they can, they can speed up the inspection. And significance over five years. And low hazard, they're not inspected at that kind of time.
Yeah, my only concern is if they're privately owned, it's really expensive to repair a dam, and sometimes they're probably just neglected because of the cost.
Well, we do get some letters, I think, do you think DEM is the one that sends those out? That, you know, they, they sent out a notice to the private dam owner, because I'm CC'd a copy, and I don't know, Bill's probably seen them too. They CC them, saying, you know, you're out of compliance with your inspection, so they are getting notified, but, you know, I don't know what the enforcement mechanism is.
And I have, there are some that are, I know one individual that's, has spent over, I don't know how many years, like ten years, but they spent in excess of $60,000 repairing a dam that they acquired.
And someone did mention to me that a dam was, a dam was just fixed up, I believe it was in the Boy Scout camp, Yago in that area, so that one was recently attended to.
Based on inspections, they can change classifications from significant to high, you know, they could, it depends. And low can also, you change, but they're not inspecting those, it doesn't matter, it's unfortunate, nothing is.
Okay. All right, does anyone else in the council have any questions for Ron? Do you have a motion possibly here?
I move that we accept the adopt, or, I move that we adopt the Hopkinton Emergency Operations Plan 2013 with the changes discussed tonight.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron, and thank you. Next on the agenda is correspondence, donation of a painting by Raymond Vincent Delaney, expression of appreciation to the artist. Mr. Delaney, if you would come to the podium, please. I want to thank you for the wonderful painting. It's beautiful. Thank you for your time and efforts, and I'm sure that the town hall will probably display it in the break room, as it was.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, that'd be nice. We're going to make sure we get that on the camera.
I've been wanting to do this painting for at least fifteen years.
Do you need us to move that?
I used to belong to a bicycling club.
Do you think you could move that, or Bill?
Quite a while ago, when we, I came across Clock Falls, we're heading towards Clock Falls and crossing over Route Three, and I had noticed it, and I said, I got to come back. But I did stop in during my ride and, to get a drink, and the man says, this used to be the old Hopkinton post office, and I took an interest in it. And as years passed on, I said to myself, I want to do a painting of that, and kept putting it off and putting it off. I said, nope. I says, I waited all these years, I'm going to do a painting, I want to donate it to the town.
Thank you.
It's beautiful.
Very sweet of you. It was quite a surprise, it was very sweet.
It's, gives me self gratification, self gratification, I'm very pleased.
It is really magnificent. The, the trees are gone, those tall trees in the back there.
Are you familiar with a man by the name of Armin LaMontagne from Sichuah, Rhode Island? He's an eminent sculptor and painter. And I studied under Armin for many a year, and he really brought my talent out, and went on from there. And I'm showing in New York now, and so I'm very pleased with, but this, this made my, my year. This made my.
But the, but the way that you did the, and I talked to you about it, the shadowing of the trees, that's really, he really captured, it looked like, when it was so thick.
I took two pictures of this, one was a fall scene, and this one was a summer scene, and I, I went for the summer scene. I took out a lot of things in the painting, but, that's what I remember the building as, because I went by there years ago, and the facade was off the front, and it looked like it was like an office building with, with vertical shutters in the window, if I remember right. And then years after that, I went back, years after that, and I look, I said, my gosh, now it's an ice cream place. But time changes, but this captures the moment in time.
And those are good days back then, when it was post office.
So what year, Mr. Delaney? Did you take the pictures?
This, I, I'm assuming, I'd say thirteen or more years ago. Around there, around that time that I had taken that photograph. Yeah, I enjoyed going in there.
I know, probably was nice to be able to paint something that reminded you of such a nice peaceful, quiet place.
This town is a very quiet place, yes. Extremely. This, this area, this historical area is very lovely. Very lovely, beautiful.
Well, if you want to, I'm sorry, if you want to come back and do any more, we'd love it.
Sure, we'll see, what I'll do, I'll paint each and every one of you.
Still my words.
Really enjoy it, thank you so much. Thank you.
No, I was going to say that, you know, in Hopkinton history, the Hopkinton post offices are all its post office. Jeremiah Thurston was the first postmaster and rented accounts in eighteen eleven, if I remember correctly. My father was for many years a postmaster on Ashway, and I knew Helen Mills, who was a postmaster in Hopkinton, and before that, her husband's aunt, Suzie Mills. They used to have pictures of her with all the wanted posters, and I was always envious of the Hopkinton post office, because they had more wanted posters than the Ashway post office, but for some reason, they got more wanted posters, but I do have a question for the artist, what type of style did you use? It almost has like a photographic type of.
To say, that's acrylic on a hardboard, acrylics, a water-based paint. That's what, I'm a realist illustrator, so when I do paint, my paintings come out, it's similar to photograph. I don't copy a photograph, see? But it gives me an idea, the picture that I take, gives me an idea of what I'm painting, but I try to make it look as real as possible.
Sure.
Well, you do.
So if it got wet, would it? So, if it got wet, would it?
No.
There's a clear coat, there's a water-based clear coat over the painting.
Yeah, clear coating on it.
It's in the break room. That's why I'm asking.
(laughing). You do put a dark powder, it'll bounce right off.
The other notable piece of artwork that we have is Portrait of Stephen Hopkins, which is based upon some sketches that were in the possession of John Trumbull, who did the designer's decoration pendants, that was in the possession of Fordham University. And I was involved in that change in lightness up at the State House. And John Philip Hagen was ultimately cho, I don't know if you know him. John Philip Hagen was chosen as the artist to do the updated portrait of Stephen Hopkins at our State House, who was governor of Rhode Island when our town was incorporated. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Mr. Delaney.
You're welcome.
Okay. Last public forum, folks. Anyone out there wishing to speak? Okay, Scott, your motion to adjourn?
I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn in memory of the late Glenna Croll and the late Alton L. and Ashton L. Perry.
A second.
A second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.